First item on the agenda, Secretary's report.
Mr. Chair, views minutes for the last regular school committee meeting. I recommend I make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second?
Motion made and second to approve the minutes as written. Questions, comments, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, minutes are approved.
Two things to the committee. Number one, Mrs. Mitchell, I would be in advance that she could not be present, so it should have its courtesy. And this week we lost our long-term HPAC instructor and football coach who fought a courageous battle against pancreatic cancer. And in fact, we went to the weight, many of staff members were students or graduates, went to the weight earlier today. I'd like to suggest a moment of silence for the loss of Derek Jansik. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Treasurer's report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Included in the package this evening is the Treasurer's report for April 30th, 2018. Cash balance at the end of April was $6,777,557.10. In local funds, we had $5,976,480.17. And project funds were $800,097.93. As everybody is aware, our fourth commitment member assessments were due on May 1st as of the end of April. Ten of thirteen towns had made their payment and the remaining three are, were paid by the 7th of the month. During the month, we see, we continue to see a lot of activities in the student activity warrants and in that they have a lot of field trips and activities such as prom and whatnot coming upon us. And so there's a lot of payment funds for that. Our grants are continuing to come in, we've had $74,000 come in for grants. And you can notice that in the banking information at the below, the scholarship fund is starting to replenish itself as we approach graduation. So that usually gets up to be slightly over $100,000 and then we make awards at graduation, which brings it down significantly. Any questions?
Seeing none.
Make a motion to accept as presented.
Motion made.
Second.
And second to accept the Treasurer's report as presented. Questions, comments, discussion. Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries and the report is approved.
I do, I'm going to state for the couple of votes and then I just want to ask to be excused.
Next item on the agenda, fiscal year 2019 appointments. These are appointments for the District Treasurer and Recording Secretary. Their terms are July 1st to June 30th.
Motion to adjourn.
Someone want to make that motion?
I'll move that, we appoint Barbara Ozier as Treasurer for the committee for the year 2018-19.
Motion made and second to appoint Ms. Ozier as District Secretary for the fiscal years for the District Treasurer for fiscal year 19. Ms. Ozier, do you accept the appointment? You accept the next for the nomination of that. Questions, comments, discussion, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, the officials who are here by the appointment first for fiscal year 19.
Thank you.
That was worth standing for.
Just have enough, it's going to be a question.
Item 4.2, Recording Secretary.
Mr. Chair.
I have a motion.
I am, we answer by move the appointment of Nicole Foreman as Recording Secretary, Blackstone Valley Regional Vocational Technical District.
Second.
Motion made and second to appoint Nicole Foreman as Recording Secretary. Nicole, do you accept such an appointment?
Yes.
Questions, comments, discussion. Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Nicole, thank you very much for continuing to discuss. Next item on the agenda, Dr. Chris Patrick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, with great delight and confidence that I welcome and invite Annika Portman and Adam Cavanagh as Skills USA State Officers. Does look like your first name has to begin with A, but that's just a coincidence. But they are adorned in their standard red jacket, impressive, you know, right now, American Revolution, you know, his name and second for those officers. Anyway, welcome, come forward. Any plans for your officership roles?
So we'll be having our first meeting this Saturday, May 19th, and we'll be discussing the upcoming National Skills and Leadership Conference. And then during our summer leadership training, we'll be put into positions based on what the council decides is best for Skills USA and all of its members.
It would, it would take me a while to go through the accomplishments and achievements of these two individuals, but let me just summarize. Adam actually has served in probably every capacity that we know of in the district. In terms of senators, in terms of reps, on a variety of other roles. Among other things, in the SHOC night, which Annika has been with us, she has actually earned perfect scores in certain skills tests for the first time in the history of Skills and Success. But these are very distinguished individuals, we're glad they're part of us. Nice job. Give us applause.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Doc, what, just as a refresher, what are the responsibilities of the Skills Officers? Adam, you want to comment on the responsibilities of the Skills Officers, both in the state and the nationals?
Yes, so as a state officer, responsibilities include planning and facilitating all the leadership conferences, starting with the Fall Leadership Conference and then moving on to the leadership conference that's new this year, just for seniors, and then the district and state conferences, and then also dealing with all the fundraising activities and goals for the entire year, as well as any new motions that come to the floor regarding the Constitution. And then at the national level, responsibilities are magnified immensely when you're representing 50 states and over 400,000 students. And then in doing those roles, you become a champion at work, which is one of Skills USA's main purposes. And then numerous other things that come along the way, including advocating for vocational education and career in technical education.
Excellent. To strengthen their speaking and presentation skills, both individuals competed in area extemporaneous and prepared speech competitions and distinguished themselves in that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Common Student Representatives.
Yeah, come on tonight. So a couple of weeks ago, about 30 people from our council went to the CDMASC Spring Conference this year. It was held at North Brookfield High School and we had one candidate run for regional president, it was Emily Donnelly. Unfortunately, she did not get on the board, but she did get on our executive board for school this year. Last night, we had our annual E-Board elections for the upcoming 2018-2019 season. Our president is Olivia Mahoney, Vice President Logan Keefe, Secretary Jess McKenzie, Communications Nolan Beckwith, Fundraising Samantha Houston, Community Service Penny Hebert, NASC Excellence Chair Emily Donnelly, which is every year when we make our excellence book for the state, the NASC is nationally, so it's between all 50 states and I believe Puerto Rico as well. And then our MASC, which is statewide Excellence Chair, is Jacob Stevens. And then our advisor elects are Tyler Morrissey, Carly Brown, and Paige Marquez. Last week, we did facilities appreciation, so each facility member got a personalized poster and a $5 Dunkin' Donuts gift card. Coming up, June 15th is our now annual handball tournament. This year, it will be in memory of Mr. Jansik, so all the proceeds that we raise will go to the charity that he chose for his donations to go to in memory of him. So that we will be doing alumni teams, student teams, maybe teacher teams, whoever really wants to play. We're really excited and all the HVAC students are involved now too, and they're ready to go, we're ready to get started. So that's pretty much it. This is my last meeting. Spent a pretty good two years, so I think, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
Mr. Jansik's designated fundraising effort is the scholarship, okay, to the hometown bank where his wife is employed. But nice job, throw up your two years.
Thank you very much.
Pass the law.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Skills USA results.
Oh yeah, we had the packets that we had pulled out, passed out, got all the information. Alright, so we had yet another record setting year. So the first page just kind of goes over everything from this year. So at first, we had our Fall Leadership Conference where we took 15 students and they all did very well, everyone got a Skills Leadership Award. After that came districts, which again, we had yet another snow, two postponents because of the weather again this year. But at that conference, we got a record 102 medals and with 14 sweeps. And we took 215 students to districts this year. So it broke down to 35 gold, 34 silver, and 33 bronze. So the gold and silver and some of the bronze then went on to the state conference, which we just had. And we earned 51 medals, so we broke last year's record again with 22 gold, 15 silver, and 14 bronze. And we will be going hopefully June 25th to the 30th to the national conference. So 21 of the 22 medalists will go and we have our two elect officers governing as well and we have three national voting delegates. Something else that Adam had touched upon this year, they started the sale conference and that is senior adventures in leadership, so it's just for seniors and we were able to take eight senior students to that. It was a day-long conference that they went to and they're going to be doing it again next year. Community service, one silver this year, and they did the game change program, which we're implementing within the school. It's a Robert Kraft partnered with Maury Healy and they developed this program called Game Change, so it's about anti-violence and it's educating students in healthy relationships. So we're implementing that. And then this year, we have 67 graduating seniors that are going to receive the cord at graduation, which means they earned a medal during their four years at Blackstone Valley Tech. So the next page, if you flip over, oh, two, actually, it's states, and then if you flip to the specifics of the district conference.
Sure, so at the district conference, they started to talk about after all the awards, they were letting us know all of the competitors that earned a perfect score, whether it was in OSHA, employability, or within their trade. So on that page, everyone that has a star and asterisk and it's highlighted, they all earned the perfect score in one of those. And it does continue down to the next page where there's a list below that they, students actually didn't even receive a medal, but they got perfect scores in something.
Our school had the most perfect scores.
We did. Of course. So our fundraising this year, we definitely tried to up it. One of the clubs that we no longer have here, the Friends of Rachel, they used to do a monthly fundraising dinner here in the restaurant. So when they didn't want to do that anymore, we said, yes, please. And it's once a month in here and it's a themed dinner and it was, we took over in January and it's been very successful and helpful to our, our club to raise, to raise the money that we need. And with that, we have donated more money to Doug Flutie and Be Like Brett, and we've also purchased 25 new Skills USA Carhartt jackets, which is part of the skills attire that the students need. And this year, we, the 25 was for all the delegates that got Annika and Adam elected at the state conference. So they are, you know, expensive and we're hoping that we, the dinners in the next year will help get us some more. And the fundraising report is on the back, the last page. So the total was $13,296 as of that, that time. We still have expenses to come out of this and of course, more, more purchases. But that's it.
Questions, comments?
Doc? First of all, remarkable, you know, really impressive, great to see the continued growth. And also to watch what we see, you know, Mr. Furori, there are so many others, spending additional time with the students as they hone their skills and bring them to the results. And certainly not limited to the manufacturing, welding department, but just, it's a great example of the effort. Is there anything else we can do to help in the awareness of the public of the dinners? Are we getting coverage to the extent that's useful on the website?
Yep, on the website, it was, it was, I know, through different social media platforms that was put out. I think this year coming up, because we're going to start it from fresh, that I think that it will be helpful that we're going to, you know, get a, you know, better understanding of who we're reaching out to and, and try to, you know, broadcast more out, but.
And one other thing that we actually did was the Chapter Excellence Program in Skills USA. We, there's three levels and we applied for our first level and we got it. So we're a chapter of distinction. And then next year, we'll be working with our chapter numbers to go to the level two and hopefully get the gold standard, which is the highest.
We would be glad to provide the cable TV networks with upcoming calendars, other kinds of things if you wanted to springboard that.
Excellent, yes, that would be great.
And Mr. Finn had a question, more than note, how, statistically, you were, you were quite precise as far as the districts last year versus the new high watermark of the districts this year. Up in the state, what was last year's state tally?
I think we had four, total medals. I believe it was like 44.
Okay, and not as many officerships or recognitions as well?
No.
Right, no one near that?
We, we only had one.
Well, we had, Adam was our only officer candidate last year.
Versus the seven recognitions of this like.
What, what do you have about the seven?
Well, we have special recognitions, okay?
Oh, you mean the perfect scores?
Oh, those, that's, okay, that's, that's. That's districts.
That was districts.
That is only the perfect scores, okay?
Yes.
Okay. How did we do last time versus perfect scores versus this?
Um, last year was the first time they recognized it and it was only our students. We had two students in the painting and design that got it.
People just watching you. Thank you. Well done.
Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Rivera speaks with a.
This is my first year, so I'm kind of, I'm rolling with this. And I will add, at the district level, it was, it's interesting because it's district competition and there's many schools there, about six, two different schools there, and but it felt like a BBT award night. It was 14 sweeps in fourteen different categories and first, second, third went to our school, was pretty amazing. And I just couldn't believe it every time, you know, in the third place, BBT, second place, BBT, and first place, that's all you kept hearing all night long, so it's pretty cool, pretty amazing. And then when we went to the states, obviously we did excellent again and it's so much fun to be a part of it. I've been an instructor here 10 years. I've always been involved with skills, like when it was called VICA back in the day, I competed myself in welding, I think in New York State, I was at junior high school, I won the silver medal. I started out my semester freshman year, moved to New York, and then I competed in New York my junior year, won the silver medal, moved back to Massachusetts. The last eight months of senior year, just made the deadline to join VICA at the time and won the bronze medal in welding and my best friend won the gold. And he went on to nationals, winning a silver medal in the nation. And at that time, they took the top three competitors and they wanted to figure out who's going to represent the United States at the world's competition. And my friend won the rights to, to win that, so it was pretty cool. So my welding instructor at the time was the first welding instructor ever in Massachusetts to have that, the bragging rights. And many years later, I became an instructor and I too was able to train a young man from this program here and he went to the world stage. So it's kind of cool, it's a pretty neat story, come full circle. So behind the scenes doing it, now I'm here with these ladies, part of the team, it's pretty interesting, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the commitment you've shown for the, for the kids. Wouldn't be able to do this without you guys, thank you very much.
It's a lot of fun.
Thanks for supporting us. Yes.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, facilities.
Yes.
I see some brickwork going on out there.
Yeah, well, first of all, we had a meeting on Tuesday night, we didn't have a meeting because we couldn't have the form. People didn't quite, didn't make it, we didn't know that until last minute, so. I just basically got an update from Jim, what was going on. You can see the sign, the football field, everything's done, scoreboard looks really good. You know, they did a good job. And now you can see the brickwork is done, thanks to Paul. Well, it's done, done to the aspect, it's there, grown, you know? So, kids are sitting in the backyard. So it's getting closer. Now, Jim, if you want to say a few words on it?
No, I mean, right now, the brickwork's going up, I'm still working with Tim Snow, a senior in drafting, to fabricate the aluminum structure that's going to go on top of the brickwork, because now that we have the actual dimensions, you know, he's fabricating the design that we're going to send out to have fabricated from the sign companies, so, and he's, he even told me that he's willing to come back after graduation in June to help out with that, you know, to finish that application. So it's great to see that partnership.
Any questions or? Paul, anything? Is it bricks?
Doc? Hi, just a couple of developments. I mean, parallel to the facilities activities, I was hoping actually to bring the check of the sale of the family gifted land, it was on Chestnut Street, tonight, but the attorney for, for the other side wasn't able to finalize a couple of documents, so we expect that we could have it as soon as tomorrow, right? So that's proceeding and without a hitch. But I don't have the check to turn tonight, I don't want to transfer it, but so, we have that.
Wait until Thursday.
Yeah. The deposit is put there. We already blew clear.
Wait until Thursday, not another 30 days, just as we said.
Not to get too far ahead of ourselves, but it's, one plan for anticipating recommendations would be to set funds when received, to be visited or examined by the public revenue, okay? You know, kind of cleanse through that process. And then it is certified in our excess and deficiency and more than likely, again, we should anticipate, we'll probably will ask for support to use that for the last section of the group. And once again, avoid any need to borrow, hopefully, and all right, ask our citizens to pony up additional funds. And then assuming that the Mass School Building Authority supports that, as they support our other efforts of this nature, and they've also complimented us for the way we treat on these things without impacting the tax dollar, then we would be eligible for a little bit better than 53% reimbursement, we'll be back. And then, you know, you can look at that when that happens, okay? So not to spend it before we get it, but we have it, once again, kind of set up through recycling technology to address a priority. And in some ways, there's no little blitz in fixing a roof, but it's still in your best interest to do that.
That's the last of.
That would be the last.
Last of our, we're aware of, unless you run into something unexpected.
There is that. Also, we're in the finalization of the lease agreement for the Maple Cemetery trustees, to hope that we can come to terms on that, okay? And so, just to keep the posting on that. So we're working, again, outside players in the Maple Cemetery group to come to a lease agreement that we think is in the best interest of the district and seems palatable and applicable to the cemetery commission. We do not have a contract yet, but we're closer than we were, kind of like the sign off-line, we're closer than we were, and we're making steady progress on those different things. And I would imagine, next month, Jim, probably you make a presentation on some improvements.
Yeah.
We summer, but we try to maximize it.
And gave us a little bit of an update on that.
Thank you.
Anything else for facilities? Seeing none, hearing none, we're going to move on. Mr. Johnson.
Right on schedule. For now. So guys, I apologize for this, I just caught one of my line items is not correct, so I'll have to just give you the title of it. Yeah, you got the same one. It's one of the transfers that I'm making, I was kind of in a rush, but we'll get that corrected in the motion. So tonight before you, you've got line item transfers that are going into two accounts and I'll direct your attention to the bottom of the transfer list, there are two accounts there. The first one should actually read health insurance. I pulled down another motion and I, that's the one that I failed to change on this one. So that should read our active employee health insurance line for $150,000. So that's the first one we'll address. We did some research and, you know, obviously when we're building any of these budgets, it's six months prior to it going into effect. And when we get into a new year, you've got new hires, sometimes you can't plan on who took advantage of health insurance in a prior period, or if anybody's going to be coming onto the health insurance product, or moving from a single or two person to a family, or even migrating to another plan such as the HSA. In this case, we had nine employees who dropped on to our health insurance and there's other movement, people coming in and going off, that's equated to 149,000 and change deficit. The second one, and then we'll have a discussion if you need to, is the Skills USA for the national competition. This estimate was provided by Becky Corda and we, using the money that we currently have in our operating funds plus another $38,000 to get us to just under $45,000 is what's going to be needed from an estimate standpoint to cover the competition for the, for the nationals. So with that, I then identified line items that we could transfer money from, and I'll direct your attention to the top of the form. The first is barber's interest expense, which we always budget for, we haven't need to use, so that's in the amount of $5,000. The school choice assessments, those were also, when we budgeted, we used prior year actuals and we had a student drop off. There was also some sped costs associated with that student and the transfer end of a new one that had a delta of $8,843. And then there are three items that are asterisks for the teacher salary. Those are very special circumstances in terms of the science, business, tech, and HPAC. With the passing of one of our instructors, obviously that was budgeted for his salary. We had another one that was also someone who was budgeted and ultimately passed away and all, that was available in those line items. We had to provide other coverage throughout the year in different forms, using longer term subs, which could also be a reason why you're seeing an increase in your health insurance for somebody who now qualifies for more than 30 hours a week on a regular schedule. And then for the remaining ones, for tech department sped and electronics, those are just a variable that comes in in terms of what was budgeted and when someone might be entering the system, or if it was budgeted at a higher rate and they were hired at a lower rate. Or if we budgeted for them to have additional credentialing and that didn't materialize, this is just something that becomes available as excess in that fund in the form of savings. All total is $188,000 worth of transfers to fund those two line items. I will tell you from my perspective. I will tell you, from my perspective, this is concerning to me when we step into next year, because if we, a lot of this, I think, happened too when we hit the April 1 renewal. You know, we saw some additional movement there. So I'm concerned about this moving forward, and we need to monitor this more closely at this point, given the six month time period before the fiscal year even starts, to get a better handle on it as we move through the year. We also have some costs in this health insurance line that's ultimately transferred over to grants, and I've removed the effect of that. If you look in your budget report that was given, that is included in that deficit right now, but ultimately it will be moved over as those costs are charged. So with that, if you've got any specific questions, otherwise it's pretty much transfers, having identified the sources and uses of funds.
I'd like to make the motion as presented.
Motion made and second to approve the motion as presented. Questions, comments, discussion?
Doc? Curtis, thank you for the background explanation and also the manner in which you've identified the possibility of making transfers and don't disrupt the education quality of what we do. Clearly, health insurance is a growing issue. As we certainly heard that on the budget presentation at half in Healthwood. The, you know, the association just elected new officers and the insurance committee has been meeting periodically. But, and we're not in the cycle of negotiations, collective bargaining. But this is another example of the need and the commitment that we need to examine our offering our coverage and explore new areas of relief, or, you know, I don't know about impact bargaining, but, you know, we're going to have to ramp up our conversations with the players, I think, to maintain the professional relationships we have and maybe even have the insurance advisory committee more often to, and really delve into this, roll up the shirt sleeves and get into this. The, I don't think we've been casual about this, but I think we need to be more aggressive with this, so.
On that, I've reached out to Mike and.
President.
Correct, and asked him to make comments on the document that we sent out. It was a recap of our meeting and some potential action items to get input. Dr. Spatter, you asked me to follow up on the concept of self-insurance. That was done two weeks ago with Deb Young, and they're going to be doing a presentation for us in terms of, you know, the difference between the small and a larger employer undertaking that task, and what steps we need to move through. Obviously, when you do that, you've got premiums that would be coming in to start paying out those expenses, but over time, those kind of get tied to actuarial evaluations based on experience, and you have to pony up that, just like you would, it's almost like your OPEB. They project what it's going to be based on your actual experience. So they can use what we've got today and give us an idea of whether that's a viable pathway for us. And then we're looking at other ideas, just internally, doing need to start moving dates of when you, for the HSA, because our FSA doesn't align with that, it confuses people, that they can't take advantage of an HSA from a contribution standpoint until the FSA plan year ends. So if we back that up, that might be more of an incentive for them to see that they're not losing anything, which they wouldn't be anyway, we just have to tell them, you can't make a contribution until such time as that plan year ends. But people, there's a lack of trust there. They just physically don't see it, and so we've got to work through some of the education piece of that.
And for the benefit of those, Curtis referenced it. In our pursuit of alternatives, I periodically ask them to research different things, including whether or not we should consider a plan, and it's a bit ambitious, to be self-insured. And whether or not we bond enough money to do that, and look at the actuarials and things like that. So we're looking at very different avenues and alternatives, so we're in a better position to propose to the full scope name and maybe like a bargaining environment, alternatives that are fair and reasonable and cost effective, so. Thank you.
Yeah, just one more question. We had, had some, a meeting on the insurance advisory. We had some notes, we came back from that, from those notes, they were dispersed on people with some hopeful action items and follow up on that. Had you got any of those recommended remedies from either side of the table as to what could come in?
That's where I started. I've reached out to him and said, you really need to look at that document. I think Mike initially said, did I get something? And I said, yes. And if you just kind of scroll by it, go back and take a look at it, you need me to resend it, I will. And I said, but we need you to respond. I think his initial comment was, we do have an HSA. And I said, yes, we do, but there's not a healthy participation. I think that, excuse me, there's like six or seven on the association side, and because they are the bulk of the, well, they are what drives our health insurance decisions. I said, it's really about what are we going to do from an education standpoint? Can we look at some grandfathering provisions? Would the union approve such a change? We've got some legal opinions that tell us the district couldn't drive that kind of a change, which, all right, so if legal said that, I'll take their word for it, but there's nothing that says the union can't vote that for themselves and go contrary because they're the voting body. I think we'd have to consider what happens to the non-union employees in that circumstance? Would we automatically migrate to the HSA plan? I think we'd have to consider some of the impact there.
Would that be, would that be legal? I mean, I can understand the union taking the position on it because they're the governing body of that, but the folks who are under the union contract that traditionally get the benefit of the union negotiated contract, what is the legal ramifications for that if they were to go to HSA? Do we know that?
I don't believe, we would have to make a choice one way or the other. We couldn't treat those employees and segregate them off and say, you can be grandfathered, any new people coming in can only get this plan. Union activity could do that. That's why I say I think we'd have to consider, what would the district have to do? Go ahead and push people right to the HSA plan? Or would we keep them on the old plan until we got movement with the union at some point and then migrate them over? But I think you have to have significant participation for us to realize the impact of that HSA plan. And one thing I did note was we had some migration from Fallon to the HSA plan, and unfortunately, in that case, while the HSA is a great product, and it will serve its purpose over time for the small population that is there, if you add the amount that we contribute, which is 750 for an individual, 1,500 for the two person and family, it actually costs the district a little bit more money because the Fallon premiums are lower to the point that it makes the premium higher when we add our contribution to that. We're okay on the Harvard Pilgrim, which is where our majority of our population stands.
Okay, all I want to say is I'm not pleased with the progress on this. I happen to echo the same sentiments as Doc. We, I think, had a very productive meeting, the first meeting, and it seemed to have fizzled. I'm not sure who the fizzler is, but I think there's probably enough fizzle on both sides to get this thing started again.
Yes.
This was a major issue. I'm like, talking to people, they continually ask, why aren't you on the GIC? Which as you know, only went up about, I think 80% of it had no increase, and 20% of it only had 2% or 3% increase. And I'm coming in with a heavily, heavily negotiated 9.9% increase. And they just said, why don't you just go to GIC? So I think, you know, this needs to be developed, and I couldn't agree with Doc more, this is going to be a major issue going forward, and it's just going to be a big expense for all of us. And I'm not particularly sure that the GIC isn't the right way to go if they continue to do what they've been able to do, which is 430,000 members keeping the cost down. I don't know, it's just my opinion, but I think we've got to have some, we've got to have some answers on our questions.
Well, we just, oh, sorry.
Well, I like the sign out front. Since we follow through with the distribution of the work of the insurance advisory committee, the association just elected you, Doc. So it's okay, your timetable, now we know just who we're speaking with on that side of the fence.
But they were new at the meeting we had.
Pardon?
They were the new members who were at the meeting that we had, correct?
Oh, they just held the elections, last, just recently.
But is it the same gentleman who's in charge as it was?
Yes, the president.
Mike, right? He was there at the previous meeting, and he was there at this meeting, he just got baptized a little different. Okay.
Well, you got to be elected.
But, no, I say, so with that new election, reelection, it comes to the responsibility to come to it. The other thing, Curtis had a conversation, and I know Anthony had a conversation, okay, so that, we're pushing him, that's all I'm saying. We're not where we want to be, but we haven't let this slide by. And we've reminded people of the need to do this as a higher priority than it seemed to, or had in the past. So just a little bit of progress, okay, in the sense of setting the table. And hopefully we can take this another step.
It just appears to me every time that we talk on the health insurance part of it, they come in, you know, 15, 17% increase, and then we have to go arm wrestle with them. Next thing you know, it's down to, Doc's helping your help last time, we got it cut almost like half. It just, it's weird to me that we just, maybe we need to shake them up a little bit and just see what the GIC can offer, because if it's a lot less, maybe that's where we are going.
It's, excuse me, I'm not trying to, it is clear to me, and I'm sure others do that, chipping away, as we may have been inclined to do and be successful in getting that at the table, won't do it.
Okay.
So just, just the 0.5 to 75 to 74, 73. Changing the contributory rates is only one part of the cost.
Right.
By, I guess, small fragments, it is insufficient, given the cost of impact.
Yep.
And so it was a reasonable strategy for a while. It was achieved.
Well, it had to be when we were 90, 10, you didn't have, you didn't have we also go.
Well, we started at 90, 10.
You know, we had a percent.
From my watch. And we've enjoyed particularly attractive rates for many years, not so much in this last cycle. And we need, a new development calls, a new problem calls for new solutions.
Yep, couldn't agree more. So for just one final comment, we have approached Deb about looking into the GIC life, and I had a conversation with Mike about that as well. And I said, our towns are really pressing us to, you know, really look into this issue of health insurance and what's driving the rates up. When you've got several of our towns that do participate, they would like to see us do the same thing in order to realize the savings. And I said, there is a provision in the law that allows your governing bodies to actually trigger that and bypass. And I said, that's not what anybody's trying to do here, but that is what some have been forced to do. I think it's fair to say, we, it's never desirable to take that out of our bargaining hands and putting it at the state, because they can make any change they want to that, and it just impacts.
Have they negotiated changes?
Not with us, no. They make the change. If you're joining the GIC, it's whatever they do, that's why they can control.
So they can indeed.
Correct.
Go ahead and put that change, you know, a lot of that will go through negotiation, would say the teachers association here at Blackstone.
They could, but you have to accept whatever it is they're doing.
Oh, I don't disagree.
Right.
It could matter or different, you've got to accept it.
So if we did a GIC life plan, you know, you don't have to necessarily join it, but you could do the same benefit structure, and that would still leave some of that within your control for future negotiations, but that would be a good starting point. So they're going to be looking at that as well.
Okay, I think the point was made. We've got to keep moving this thing, because this is not getting better, it's getting worse.
Okay. Did y'all make that actual vote?
Motion's okay.
The motion is on the table. Any other questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving item 9.1, the balance transfer, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, and before you've got two donations, one for Mass Bay Community College, item 9.2A is a 2012 Chevrolet Camaro. And I believe these are through the Ford Asset Program, we used to belong to it. I think Mass Bay still does. We can't get anything through them direct anymore because there's a large fee associated with that, and from what I understand, Massachusetts seems to be the only state that has the fee. So we got it indirect through Mass Bay, and we're looking for your vote to approve or to accept the donation.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Motion made and second to accept a 2012 Chevy Camaro. Questions, comments, discussion?
Curtis, given the specificity of the tax exempt dollar, $19,000.
Yeah.
What, how is the value of a vehicle that can't be used, or is used only as a stationary problem solving tool? How, is there any adjustment of value when it doesn't have its standard use, it has its, as a instructional?
I haven't necessarily been told that the aren't useful. Sometimes they are, sometimes they're not, but there is a value associated with that, and that is through the auto tech instructors, they determine from Blue Book. And it's got to be running for them to give anything, I would say, on that Blue Book value. It has to be.
Yeah, no, my point is when something's going to be put into, I'm not salvage here, but it no longer is being used in the manner of a car traditionally.
Oh, correct.
It's not hitting the roadway, they can't cannibalize it, okay? And it's still pretty valuable, I understand the value, it's a teaching tool. I just wonder whether or not, a Blue Book is pretty much designed for something that you're going to use on the roadway.
Well, no, it is, and so the donor has his choice. You can either sell it and get the money, or you can take it as a tax write-off. It, you know, it's just how it impacts your taxes. In this case, Mass Bay's not going to be filing taxes, but we still, for their purposes, we just assign the value. Again, this comes from our experts in auto tech, and that then goes down to a taxpayer or a community or an entity.
Yeah, I welcome that, I just, I just wonder if there's any kind of adjustment for the value when it has.
No, because I think it's, at the date that it's given, is it usable as a vehicle, regardless of what we're going to do with it? Is the bottom line.
That's the answer, that's the answer.
Any other questions, comments, discussion on the Camaro? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor of accepting that donation, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, item 9.2B is from one of our employees, Kim Elder. She is donating a 2,000 Honda Acura, and it's valued at $2,354.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made and second to accept the 2,000 Honda Acura. Questions, comments, discussion?
It's going to be the same thing as a four car vehicle?
Yes.
Anything else? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor of accepting this donation, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, donation accepted.
I'll give her a new parking sticker for the new car.
That will be no charge.
Damn. Probably get whacker for the fee.
Okay, the next orange document you have in it is followed by a blue vote sheet, item 9.3. There's a whole lot of information on there that we're required to present, and in the end, we just have to run through a calculation, look at the, in the end, is the price of a free lunch? And then we pull off the value of the federal reimbursement for full pay students and come up with a value, in this case, it's $2.92. At this point, we are at $2.90, so given the fact that we're just below that, we have to run it through the inflationary factor. When we do, we get a 12 cent add to that, which requires us to raise the price of lunch. At this point, it would only be a dime, we don't go to the two pennies, so we're going from $2.90 to $3. Just to give you an idea, Minden Upton and Northbridge are at $2.85. That's for this year. I'd be very, very surprised if they're not required to raise their lunch. There are ways that you can do that by supplementing with other funds, such as the general fund, but we are actually pretty much in line with our other schools when I go down the list. We're at $2.90, and Grafton, $2.95, and let's see, Bellingham, Blackstone, Millville, Douglas, Milford Public, and Millbury, and Sutton are all at $3, and Hookdale and Nuxbridge are at $3.25. So as we're moving into 2019, we will be certainly at a majority of our schools of where they sit now.
Make the motion. Second.
If I raise.
Motion made and second to increase the lunch to $3. Questions, comments, discussion? Doc?
Curtis, there's been considerable debate at the state office over the past 10 days over the school systems that have punished kids who.
Lunch shame.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, that's the term. But in any case, it's a situation where a student may or may not be eligible for free or reduced lunch, but they didn't sign up for it, and they've been, they've been given like a backroom sandwich, or, I don't know, almost treat them like deadbeats. Is, does the school committee feel comfortable that Valley Tech has processes in place that that does not happen here?
Absolutely, and we go through this with the student, parent orientation, okay? And what we do is we tell them that the system, we encourage everybody to. day, and what we do is, we tell them that the system, we encourage everybody to sign up online, and get notifications when their balance is starting to get low, so we start notifying somewhere around six dollars and let them know, you're starting to get low. When they hit the zero, we tell the parents, we'll let them charge three times. On that fourth charge, we give them an alternative lunch, which fully qualifies, it's just not the full main meal, and if they have any sensitivities to that meal, we will arrange for them to have another one. And we start reaching out at that point, either to guidance counselors, or to parents, to just ask them, are, were you aware that balance is low, we need you to get that in here? If they've already picked up a lunch, they'll usually let them go ahead and take it, they'll just, you know, kind of pull them off to the side eventually, and let them know, hey, just make sure you're checking with your parents to make sure you get lunch on the account, or lunch money on the account. We don't treat them any differently, especially when they're going through the line, because all of this is cashless, nobody knows who's free, nobody knows who's reduced, the only thing they say is just, you're okay to go, you're okay to go. And then if there's any issues as they're getting lower and lower, you know, they start telling them. If they see it's persistent, then it really is a hard line to the guidance counselors for them to reach out and find out if something's going on with the parent. We'll even do that in our office, to see if we need to get them a free and reduced lunch application. So, we undertake all efforts to make sure that they're getting what they need, and we usually find out that a parent didn't know, or maybe the kid's not spending their lunch money on lunch, they're using it for something else, but we, we do offer assistance in any way we can.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor of increasing the cost of lunch, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
And the final one is, the, we would like the school committee to consider accepting the Dupree Tool Scholarship, and Fran Dupree was a graduate in nineteen seventy-five, and they would like to start giving two five hundred dollar scholarships every year to purchase tools for up to five hundred dollars. Currently, the way it's established, because they're looking at matching funds from several different organizations, that it needs to pass through a five oh one C three, we are once M D C one, although we're tax exempt, they really prefer that to go through that organization, so we're going to use the Valley Tech Ed Foundation. And then they're going to pass the money, once they accept the check, to us, and we'll maintain the scholarship here, but at least it's not their requirement to pass through a five oh one C three. It will then follow the same scholarship procedures we always have in place here.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion, I'll make the motion.
Motion made, and second to approve the this scholarship. Questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
All right, thank you. Oh. The reference of nineteen seventy-five graduate, this is a perfect segue for me to ask the committee also to enter a moment of silence for the loss of former one-term principal, Valley Tech employee John LeBrun. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, policies of committee, Mr. Carr.
Dave, Paul and I met for close three hours the other day going over all of the policies. Most of it's just single word changes and some phrase changes, but basically the same. A lot of it's from the M A S C language, that require changes, and, um, let me go over this quickly, biggest one is the Non-Discrimination Act, or all the things, and it deals with changing a lot of words, the other thing will deal with frequency of discrimination and that type of thing. So, the first one is the meal changes, you all received the policy, and it's marked and read the changes, and it's mostly just plain old terminology changes, all like house people.
Or be word, house people.
Most of it.
I'll make the motion.
For the new poli, the new meal charge policy. Motion made, and.
Second.
Motion made, and second. Questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor of approving the new policy for meal charge, E F D, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
The rise of United Party, biggest one, as I said, is the non-discrimination policy, and that reclaims, theme goes through all the other policies further down, and books everything else where it addresses them. As you'll see, in the one provider view, most of it has changed, a lot of it's crossed out from our terminology to M A S C terminology. Next one is the biased disability, and also that's from M A S C, the tobacco changes are fairly small, and that is also largely changed with M A S C addressing electronic cigarettes, I guess, and that type of stuff. Alcohol and tobacco drug, everything is the same. Any questions?
If nobody has any objection, I entertain a simple motion to approve all the revised policies that we have in front of us.
I'll make the motion to approve it as presented.
Motion made, and.
Second.
Motion made, and second to accept the revisions to policies A C, A C E, A B C, and J I C H, for all those that are looking for acronyms.
Yeah, you're welcome. Sorry.
Don't mind, I was just going to say, any comments, questions, comments, discussion? You have to add to that. Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor of approving those revisions, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, those four policies are now revised.
Okay, I'd appreciate if we do the same with these here, policies for the long ones.
Nobody has any objection, the, because these are now handbook approval.
Oh, handbook. Different sections. Here is a synopsis of all the changes, it's three pages, and it breaks down all of the changes in the handbook right here, and then there's basically three paint, changes, and gives you the terminology, why they were changed, and the reason that they had to be changed.
Motion to accept, second.
Motion made, and second to accept in bulk, three, five handbooks.
If I may, Mr. Tim, I'm sorry, I did have a note here that I wanted to check with. This is on this handbook approval.
Yep.
Number eight. Cautioning the reading of it, it's clarified that students may be consequence for incidents. I, I, I had just saw a bit, that they may not read correctly, so I wanted to bring it to your attention.
Anthony, can you address that one?
See anything? It's number eight, first sentence.
It might just be the way the notes written, that's why I think we wanted to clarify the case, make sure that handbook.
Yeah, this, this isn't the actual wording in the handbook, this was a summary, and it looks like there's a typo in the summary.
Okay.
Was the other shows to your concern?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, I think I'm steward of that.
Yep.
I just wanted to make sure that, that obviously was clarified before it gets through.
That's all right, just happened to catch you when I was reading it.
Thank you.
Thank you. But you know, I do beat you.
I would tell you, it was, it was one of the longest ones.
First page, yeah.
Yeah, I know, at least the cover page.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? All right, this was a single motion to approve all five handbooks, so, motion forces, so all those in favor of approving the student handbook, the athletic student handbook, the practical nursing student handbook, practical nursing student, practical nursing tuition fees, practical nursing faculty handbook. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, the handbooks are now approved. Next up, Mr. Steele.
Thank you very much for having me. Mr. Gross, you told me I have until seven oh five. Gives me at least ten minutes.
Chat almost cut us up, almost.
Well, let me see what I can do.
The screen is down, Anthony, they can't see the clock.
I have, I have nothing to give news to report to you, so, so, besides.
I make a motion to accept it.
Eleven point one, MCAS trial exam, say, alerted you earlier in the year that we were embarking on this, there was some concern, or, you know, our students being used as guinea pigs and that type of thing, we, we always protect against that, as I assured you, and I thought, since we discussed it coming into it, you should get a follow-up. Surprising results, so we did the same as, actually, I think, all schools, all high schools in Massachusetts participated, about a third, roughly a third, seventy-five, nice students or so participated, soft boys, they did so right on the heels of one of their other MCAS exams, but they did it enthusiastically, as we've expected they would. But this was a new type of MCAS that's, that's coming out, this, the major difference is it's all electronic, whereas right now, we, we test in paper and pencil. So, this was a computer-based exam, and the adults, I think, are pretty uneasy about it, you know, it's a whole new way to do a business, there's a number of things that can go wrong, you know, networks could go down, et cetera, et cetera. Well, apparently, the, the students love it, they, they thought it was far superior to the paper version, they, in this case, it was an English exam that they were doing a trial on, they're able to, you know, blow up their passage that they're reading on one half of their screen, type in the other half, the fact that they can type and not have to write, you know, their, their drafts and things in pencil is very favorable to them. And I guess, as you could logically expect of digital natives, they thought it was a great improvement, and quite an upgrade. So, we did our part, as we, we said we would, we took, you know, took the exams, the trials seriously, and the results were very favorable, kids, kids would prefer it. So, it's coming, coming our way, and there's also a trial for us to make sure that we do indeed have the capabilities to make this run smoothly. Our infrastructure, our technology infrastructure is in very good shape, as you know, it looks like comparatively to other schools, our, our infrastructure is set up well to do this, so we think it'll be fine. But just a follow-up, any questions on eleven point one? Okay, eleven point two, Promising Practices Nominee, I believe we've alerted you in the past that this is an annual activity through the Super Tenants Consortium of the thirteen towns. Tomorrow morning, Dr. Fitzpatrick and Saturday Hathaway as the board coordinator will be honoring Matthew Connors as this year's nominee, that'll be over at the Azza Waters Mansion tomorrow morning, correct, Dr. About eight o'clock or so?
Correct.
And certainly just wanted a chance to highlight Mac Connors, whom you have seen before, he's presented to you before, is our engineering lead teacher there, and quite a deserving candidate at this point, all right? Any questions on eleven point two? Okay, moving on to eleven point three. Wednesday, we dedicated our faculty meeting for teachers appreciation, I should extend that to faculty appreciation, because we really don't differentiate in that type of activity, but there's also Nurses Appreciation Week, so we have done this annually, that during this, this week in time, we purposefully set a faculty meeting up with essentially appreciation-type activities, we've done some nice themed things, it's an opportunity for the administration to show its appreciation, extend your, your thoughts and well wishes as well to them, for all that they do for our kids. And really, we'll be talking about the nurses for all they do for all of us, including the staff, always looking out, taking care of us. This year's theme, we did a Good Humor Day, and celebrated with good humor, ice cream bars, happened to get our hands on a real ice cream truck, it may, it may not have driven an upright on the lawn outside the calf, and they all came out, and myself and Tom Mellon served ice creams out the window, with the, the great music blaring and all that good stuff. Made the milkshakes inside, it was a nice day, but you know, it's, it's tough, and this time of year, they're, they're, they're pretty tired, right? We're getting down to the end here, and people are pretty exhausted, so it's a, a nice time and an opportunity to let them know that we, we think about them, care about them, appreciate what they do, and do something nice for them. So, that was the year's theme, that was a lot, a lot of fun, a lot of good humor had by all, right? With our ice cream hats on. Questions on eleven point three? All right, eleven point four, we just had our junior senior prom on Saturday, I believe it's a record setter, we're into records around here, we like breaking records, it's six hundred and eighteen students attend, we, I'm still maintaining our contract with the D C U Center, we, we really enjoy that venue, it's about as secure of a venue as you can get, there's one escalator that goes in, and the one that goes down is turned off, and they're in there, right? And we can keep our eye on them, not that they, they don't misbehave anyway, with, you know, no incidents there. Great staff there at D C U, works with our staff, so it's a, a nice, safe, secure event, everyone had a great time, made it home safely, and again, six hundred and eighteen kids having a very memorable moment, so it's a nice thing to report to you.
No fire alarms this year?
No fire alarm, yeah, last year, the D C U caught on fire, if you recall, right? And we spent an hour and a half outside, and then it rained on us while we were out there. The highlight of that was, it was Mr. Woodward's fifty-fourth birthday, and they sang him, saying happy birthday to him in the St. Vincent's parking lot. No, less eventful in that regard, right? Any questions on the prom report, eleven point four? Hey, eleven point five, last night was the, today, Thursday, this was, yeah, well, it's been a busy week, pardon me, the Mac Scholarship Night was on Tuesday night, we are part of the Milford Area Chamber of Commerce, five of our towns, Bellingham, Hopkale, Mendon Upton, and Milford are all part of the Milford Area Chamber of Commerce, so it's obviously a significant subset of our sending districts. Milford Area Chamber of Commerce, so, we serve ten towns, I believe, in total, and we are represented by five of them. So, the Milford Area Chamber of Commerce has this annual event, I think it's their seventeenth year, if I'm not mistaken, and it's the celebration of the top ten percent of the graduating class. So, I am joined there by the other principals from the, the ten towns, and Tri-County is also part of that activity as well, so, it's Blackstone Valley Tech, Tri-County, and, and the high schools from each of the ten towns participate, about five, five hundred and fifty students that are honored there, guests there, and a nice dinner, it does, it does run a little late, we got out there about ten fifteen or so, but gave everybody a chance to know, you recognize the way they're going to, to college, or what they're doing next year for their futures, and also had represented, Murphy spoke, Murray, sorry, so, spoke, so it's, it's well-recognized event, and nice to be part of. Any question on eleven point five? Okay, eleven point six, I have some out-of-state trips to consider, there is an additional trip that was not listed here, as I spoke to the chair about, why don't we start with the known items with eleven point six A. This is a recurrence of, what should I say, the second annual motorsports team trip to Lebanon Valley, New York, to Lebanon Valley Dragway, we had a great event last year, it's essentially the same model, actually, the difference is, we have no, no costs for food this year, as the students demonstrated last year, they would prefer to bring all of their own hamburgers and hot dogs, all they ask is we bring the grill, so, no, no cost to the schools in that regard, I think I put in a small amount, no, no tolls either, because we have the transponder, so, essentially, it's thirty students, and a number of chaperones there, at least four of us will take them out there.
I'll make the motion.
Be back the same day.
Second.
Motion made, motion made, and second to approve the trip to West Lebanon, questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, I figure I should probably, you know, West Lebanon, New York.
Correct, it's not Lebanon, the country.
Or the mansion.
Yeah, right, or Lebanon, New York.
It's a three-day or something.
Okay, eleven point six B is a painting and design trip, this is a tour of the mansions in Newport, Rhode Island, we actually already have the, the, a full class, our full class, this is the juniors. This is the juniors and P and D who are going down to specifically look at some aspects of architecture and interior design.
Make a motion together.
Second. Motion made and second. Questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor of approving the trip to Newport, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Your add-on.
Okay, the add-on I just received today, so I apologize. This is for the construction technology sophomore and freshman. They were, they are asking to go, let me just say, to Cranston, Rhode Island, and Oakland, Rhode Island, to CK Custom Cabinet Company and Millwork One Incorporated. They're going to get tours of their facilities, their manufacturing facilities. So it's two different stops in Rhode Island that day. They will be back, leave at eight fifteen a.m., be back at one p.m., and the instructors from Construction Technology, Mark Fitzpatrick, will be taking them on as the chaperone. School van, no costs.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made and, motion made and second. And I posed my question, was it gonna be the delay, and was it just one of those things that popped up, or?
I think it was a late invitation that they received. They turned it in today to me. We got it, went through the chain of signatures and checking. I looked at the calendar to June, and I said, we're not gonna make it by a couple of days.
No, it was just good to understand, because I know you work really hard to make sure they know to get them in early, but obviously, some things are out of their control.
And I will have his brother just tell me.
No, no, no.
Fortunately, he has another brother.
I'm not sure that they were, you know, obviously, they got a late invitation, but I'm not sure he was even realizing when June, this is a trip in June, that our committee would not meet before they were going.
What was the date of the trip? I know you said it was on eight to one.
Three eleventh and twelve for one of them.
Yeah, the same day. It's, they're both June eleventh and twelfth. Is that accurate?
Yeah.
No? Okay.
Five and six and eleven.
So one group on eleven six would be the freshmen, the eleven twelve would be the sophomore.
Okay, I was just, I was gonna say.
And I think we need, and we meet on.
The twenty-first. The twenty-first. Yeah, no, like I said, I know some things are out of their control, just that information is usually helpful to find out what's going on there.
He's from a good family.
We try not to do that to you, and likewise, we appreciate when you've been flexible to do it.
All right, any other questions, comments, discussion on the, these trips? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor approving the trip to Cranston, Oakland, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, those trips are approved. Thank you very much, Mr. Steele.
Well, it's not seven oh five.
No. So I was gonna say, first, it wasn't lucky, he was worried about the timing anyways. He just seemed to be off enjoying the ride.
I appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda, Mr. Levin, budget report.
Yes, the budget report. Happy to say we have a budget. Score so far is nine to one. Okay, so let's start off. Talk to Chet from Milbridge.
Anthony and I went to the town meeting, and we sat there, and there wasn't a question, and just went by with no problems. I think Anthony was more interested in watching the town manager and school department fight. He enjoyed that, I think.
It was interesting.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for Chet?
Actually, it's not uncommon that much of the groundwork is set up at the finance committee meeting, and I know I've reported on finance committee meetings, but just to refer back to, Chet and I had a pretty, whatever, significant presentation on the Saturday morning for the finance committee that agreed, decided the issues that they had, and even a little bit of confusion by the town administrator, okay, which rectified our numbers to the, I guess, actually reduced them.
Yeah, we actually reduced them significantly when he told he was adding to things that should have been added.
Yeah, we, he had used a number which was higher than our request. And so he just, in good faith, wanted people to be aware that, no, that's not what our request is, as you voted, as the board should have voted. And therefore, so we had kind of a good news story, we didn't even anticipate.
Not get the industry involved.
Well, he actually gave them money to redirect another way, I guess, you know, but we wanted to make sure that nobody thought that we inflated the number over above what you voted and what our request was. But fortunately, that was, it all worked out, I think.
I think when we inform them the number that we're coming next year, you might feel a little more taken back. And I'm not complaining about the number of students that, that Milbury increased by this year, because we've been a mountain very happy with that. I'm just too bad for the colleagues who took them away from.
I'm sure you'll recover. I'm sure you'll recover.
I'm doing a tour this year. And you're back.
All right.
Earlier in the season, both Dr. Fitzpatrick and I attended the Northridge FinCon, the May first annual town meeting. I did have to miss due to work constraints, so I will turn it back over to Dr. Fitzpatrick for the meeting analysis.
Yeah, I thought it was interesting, because the long-term moderator returning out, who returned from a medical, you know, situation, to serve as moderator, but his health didn't stay steady, and he was not able to finish the meeting, okay? So there was some frustration by one member of the audience, that was rather unfortunate to say that when our item came up, it was not challenged, and I'd like to thank the finance committee for their support. Interesting to say this, that the local school system had two pages of special warrant articles outside of it, but, and so I guess one of the reasons why we might not have had challenges is because the real concern that the local system had was to shepherd through a healthy list of special warrant articles on the municipal side, and so that did go through. And in our life, it was kind of like a, you know, non-entity in what was accomplished. So glad to have the support, there was a significant increase in students and our assessment in that, so it was a good one to have.
As with Mrs. Koopman, I attended the FinCon meeting with the doc, and up to this, very easy, subject speed. They're very accepting of PBT and what we do. I was not unable to attend the annual meeting, so I'll turn that.
The town meeting was not, not a debated item, and as Dave points out, we were pretty much on friendly turf, and people were kind enough to extend congratulations, so applause and recognition for what we've done, what's accomplished, what our students have done, some of which was presented earlier this evening, and it was a favorable vote.
Okay. Dave's not here, Doc, Dennis?
Dennis. Yeah. The, the finance committee presentation went fine, and the town meeting went fine, and Mendon.
Douglas, myself, Anthony. Let's hit town meeting, and the town of Douglas, this year decided to put Valley Tech as a warrant article versus tying it again with their own school system. And we came up for a vote. Taxpayers of the town voted for budget, but I don't think the taxpayers of the town realized it was a no vote, because it was not the number that Valley Tech had submitted to the town. So basically, everybody that voted yes was really a no. I mean, that's as easy, Anthony, I don't know.
There were a few things that seemed like a very predetermined event, if you will. The front cover of the warrant booklet essentially had a description, paragraph, if you will, that the, it's a dire state of financial affairs in the town, budgetary affairs, was primarily due to the two private schools that draw students and funds from their town budget, and they went on to list Blackstone Valley Tech and North Fork Aggie as two private schools. So there was already sentiment not to recognize Valley Tech as their career technical system, which they're significant owners, but rather to, ninety percent, I believe, ninety percent ownership of the school, rather present it as an adversarial private school draining their funds, and the primary cause, if you will, but if you read that paragraph, for their current situation. The bulk of the meeting was about losing numerous town services and resources, not having enough funding to maintain basic operations, town library and things of that nature, police, fire, et cetera. And so, as Mr. Levin pointed out, it was a new practice to break out the Valley Tech budget request as a separate article, so they took it out of the omnibus, and made it a separate article. And when they put it in a separate article, they essentially replaced the requested amount with the minimum funded amount. They did put a description of that in the warrant article, that they were doing that, which was somewhere in the neighborhood of seventy, seventy-five thousand dollars less than our requested amount. And so, as Mr. Levin pointed out, procedurally, if the town votes less than a full.
Request.
Request, it's tantamount to a no vote. Confusion, if you will, with the citizenry when you do things like that, but I think it was, as you said, very, very predetermined, if you will, that the finance committee certainly didn't support us, that was evident at the FinCon meeting, but it was not going to be very likely to pass a budget for us in that town.
I mean, I also find it interesting, because not only is that misleading, because Valley Tech is a, it's a community that sends students here, it's a public school, but it's also misleading, because the Aggie is a public school, it's a school choice situation, it's not a private school that parents are, you know, up in the tuition and going out better, that's.
Those things are not factual? They're not, to suggest that it's not factual, but it does act as a sentiment that we received at the finance committee meeting.
All right, a couple of things happened since the, you know, finance committee meeting and the town meeting. First is several citizens from Douglas conveyed their apologies, I guess, to Franklin, because they were embarrassed by what they said to the behavior of the finance committee and the interactions with me and with you. So I thank people for the concern. The second, there may have been some fear factor here, when the town meeting took place, there was an override ballot that had yet to have taken place, had happened, and there was a fair, a total number of dollars the town had available. However, the townspeople, on a close vote, subsequently supported the override at both the town meeting and ballot box. And so since that action at the town meeting, as encouraged by the finance committee, the town has secured additional spending capacity to its override, okay? What is it, one and a half, one point eight? One eight, I think it was, one point eight. One eight, I think, okay? But they didn't know that at the town meeting.
So how does that, how does that no vote affect us?
When the thirteen towns came together fifty-three years ago, they came together with a condition for operating budgets, if two-thirds of the towns support something, all towns must honor it. So as soon as nine towns approve a budget, then all towns have to honor it as you voted. And if refusal to do so, the state won't allow them to subtract it. So the state has a power play in the event they had to use it, okay? But once again, the town has greater spending capacity than they knew and took it, and they voted at the town meeting today. Did I answer your question?
Nothing. Just trying to learn.
No, but it's a good thing to learn. It's one of the ways in which the thirteen towns were able to be eligible for this investment, and have twelve other partners to do it, and be eligible for the high standards that generate so many dollars in grants and in state subsidies. So it's, it's, participation's consortium has significant value to all fifteen towns, like any other partnership, with certain conditions.
I just want to, Doc, part that bothers me the most is, you know, I've lived in Douglas for a long time, and you can't even get any of the selectmen or any of the finance committee members to even come into the school, to even take an hour of their time to see what we really do here. But they stand there and, you know, and they just throw, you know, allegations and disrespect for the school, in my own personal opinion, when they should be here to see what goes on. Then if you have something bad to say, or something disrespectful, I'll understand that, but you need to see it firsthand before you even stand there and say, hey, you know, if you don't know what's going on, you shouldn't be saying things to be said.
For the benefit of the listening public, then I would reaffirm our commitment in having members of both of the finance committee and selectmen to reach out to us for a mutually scheduled opportunity to tour their investment, and one of the reasons why so many students from Sutton, I'm sorry, it's not in this case, Douglas, wish to be here, okay? Glad to give them that tour.
Yes, I'd love to. Maybe he has that day with them.
Many of our finance committee members and selectmen from other towns have done that, not so much in Douglas.
Mr. Finn?
Just a question, Doc, is this a tactic that could be translated to other towns, where they put it on a warrant item as opposed to an omnibus situation for the amount of money that they could spread if some chose to do so in the future?
Yeah, I would say the problem is not moving it from an omnibus to a separate warrant article, it's when you ignore the voted amount voted by the regional elected school committee. So there's no issue, there's plenty of towns that have a separate warrant article and put in the number you voted for the assessment.
Remember, putting it at a lesser amount, because I know Millville, that number is active number.
Yeah, but you could do that in an omnibus article just as much as you could do in a separate.
So it's a matter of really having it less than what's been voted, isn't it?
That's the issue, not the format. They're ignoring your elected vote.
Okay, it'd be nice to vote on what is presented, what people think they want to hear.
Well, ideally, the citizens should hear and should take action on the voted assessment number, with some conversation of whether or not there's an obligation to do that, okay? And then, and if the finance committee doesn't support it, so be it, they would recommend, you know, that the citizens not support your voted amount, and then you could make a subsequent amendment for a lesser amount, or an increased amount, by the way. Yeah, that seems logical to do it that way, as opposed to the way they've done it. So if we all vote on this, we send it in, finance committee gets it, and they don't even give us the respect of putting it on the, on the warrant item, at the amount of money that all of us who sat here for a full year put together. But that's pretty ignorant, to do something like that. It's discourteous, at least. Indeed. Yeah, sure, Jim and I were both at the follow-up town meeting earlier this week, Tuesday, in the middle of a rainstorm, okay? And Oxbridge, the finance committee fully endorsed Valley Tech's request, and once the citizens got through a few other issues that had nothing to do with us, they also
Grafton Town Meeting was Monday, I was there by myself.
Who was there?
Sarah? No, no. Must have been out in the entryway. Was that full? Anyways, got a chance to talk to a number of people before the meeting. Most of the feedback I received was very positive, people commenting on what they've been seeing in the local papers, Grafton News, et cetera, with skills awards, athletic awards, some of the special things our students have been doing, you know, some complaints about the reduction of the number of students in Grafton, so I'm not making a push to talk to as many people as I can to get the number of applications up, because we are at sixty students in the school, which is about a fifteen-year low for Grafton. So, you know, I kind of take that personally, and I want to get as much word out about the school as possible. Grafton is a town that puts the budget on a separate warrant article, and there's one for the main budget and one for the capital expense part that Grafton owns for the construction. Both votes are nearly unanimous in favor of, so no issues from the Grafton Town Meeting.
Well, for the Finance Committee, Doc, in terms of the meeting, I had a prior commitment. I guess meeting went very well with the Finance Committee, so when it came to the town meeting, Barbara and myself were ready to discuss anything that would have came up, and they suspended my, my speaking.
Jared, Millville?
Millville's an interesting one. We had a special town meeting. First of all, we met through the Finance Committee before, and they were impressed and told me in the QT that they thought that there would be no issue. But we had an emergency, a special town meeting about three weeks ago, two and a half weeks ago, and that was for a two-and-a-half override at the total of one twenty-eight million dollars on a six-million-dollar budget. It overruled, and they voted it down at that straw, at that special town meeting. So, then we went to the town meeting last Monday night. Within that town meeting, that started at seven and ended at quarter past twelve in the morning.
It was a short one this year.
Yeah. On that particular one, there was a situation where we did get the override at least to now a town vote on June sixteenth, or nineteenth, oh, yeah, right, sixteenth. So, that we've now moved it from a no vote to a new vote that will be on the June nineteenth. If the town votes to approve the override, which now has been reduced to one million dollars, our budget will go through. So, there was two budgets presented that night, that's why it took so long. If indeed the town says, nope, we're not even going to allow a million dollar on an override, our budget would then fail. So, I can't deliver to you yet that we have a success, and let me tell you that it's pending, is the best I can tell you. We did have one gentleman that took, tried to take a pot shot at the BVT. It was pretty front row that night, and thanks with Curtis and myself, we helped him back to his seat. So, we're fine. That's kind of where it ended up. So, I really can't deliver anything to you yet until we have that special vote on the, on the override. So, if it goes through, then we're good. If it doesn't, then we're not.
Dr. St. Julie's not here?
Yeah, well, since the committee might not feel quite as comfortable as they did a moment ago before Mr. Phil's, Mr. Sin's presentation with Millville, let me point out that there are three additional towns that have yet to meet. All three are expected to be favorable, okay? Those would be the towns of Bellingham, Blackstone, and Hopefield. So, maybe a pushing, don't fret. Yes, Sutton was also earlier this week, that's why I wasn't in Millville, or Millville or Crafton, and it was a favorable vote. However, the Finance Committee voted, I think, six-zero in favor of Valley Tech's budget, but they did something that bothered me, and you could even say offended me, in that they, they had a narrative in their warrant that took issue with the way in which the Valley Tech budget was received, and they identified issues raised at the Finance Committee. And the issues, you know, they said that the Finance Committee thought that it was inappropriate for Valley Tech to ask for administrative positions, plural, while the local system was cutting staff. And we did not ask for administrative positions, as you know. We had, you know, anything close to that would be the reinstatement of a secretary who has significant data collection responsibilities to also help us in getting more grants. And so, I just felt that was not factual and not fair. The other thing is, we have more students. I don't know if Sutton has more, I think they have fewer. And the, when, when the town acted on its warrant, it had a variety, about a half a dozen special items for the Sutton School System, sidewalks and community's driving vehicles, which is fine, all on the municipal side. So, I don't, I don't see where there's a fair, you know, comparison, since all the things that we request are in our assessment, single item, but. The next issue that, that the narrative that the citizens, you know, were given, said that we were cautioned as far as we should not be using one-time E and D funds, excess and deficiency. And, and I took issue with that, I'm saying, wait a second, we have led the world on cautioning people about not using one-time funds for vehicle costs. We have used excess and defi, I said, my school committee and my Finance Committee have used excess and deficiency funds for at least the past fifteen years, so that is one aspect of proving that it doesn't, you know, it's not one time. Secondly, the very Finance Committee, that this narrative, you know, takes issue, initiated the criticism, is that they made a recommendation on how we should use next year's E and D. Well, if they can recommend what we use next year's E and D, they certainly can't argue that it doesn't, it only exists at one time.
Right.
Which is, so, they, they detailed that excess and deficiency in the future should be used for OPEB, but I had already agreed, and I alerted the full school committee that we should give greater consideration. We had a considerable debate at the, at the budget building meeting here relative to the best way to use excess and deficiency. Generally, there was a criticism that the assessment was too high. Well, we use E and D to lower the assessment. If you use it for something else, OPEB for something else, that means you wouldn't have it available to use it to reduce the assessment. So, which is it, is the assessment too high with an E and D offset, or, you know, should we have used E and D different? So, I ended up speaking to the citizens, I alerted the Finance Committee Chair in advance that I was going to do that, and I told the citizens, and those are sample of some of the concerns, that our school committee and the superintendent value the relationship and the professional experiences and interactions with the Sutton Finance Committee and all Finance Committees. And, and we have given credence to any recommendation. We eagerly approve and encourage recommendations for cost-effective strategies. Within five days of me, Julie and I meeting at the Finance Committee in Sutton, I provided them and you with a detailed summary of the conversation to plant a seed for, and certainly proving that we took their, their recommendations to heart. I looked at what happened at the Finance Committee as suggestions and recommendations, not criticism, and I frankly thought the narrative was a cheap shot and not reflective. Finance Committee Chair softened it with his remarks, both to me privately and also to the citizens, saying that we have a good working relationship and that we have been responsive. And so, I felt like a kid who got an F on his report card with a note saying, you know, works well with others. You know, I don't get it. So, in any case, I hope that that's not a new characteristic of our interactions with that, but I'm appreciative of the six-zero unanimous vote of the Finance Committee. So, an awkward spot, and we didn't have any challenges, and that's to it. I know we take pride in, in how we do our cost-effective business. When we don't ask upon, when we ask our, we negotiate with our employees to make a contribution for OPEB. In Oxbridge, for example, okay, they, OPEB was a big conversation, it was many places. They have a fifty-million-dollar obligation, okay, in Oxbridge under the contract, and they, they were making it, they were proposed, I think fifty thousand to be used against it, okay? This is, you know, from the municipal side. The other thing is, not to pick on Sutton, but I'm, I rather doubt that Sutton's school system contributed money for OPEB. I'm sure the town has slightly contributed for OPEB, but I doubt, in our case, in our, we receive thirty dollars more per student, right? That's all we get from the state, and we have no other pocket to take it from. So, you have to take it away from the kids to do that. And our OPEB contribution was greater as we built the budget, and we were, we were concerned. A four-point-seven-four budget is one of the highest that we've ever advanced, and I won't say the sheepers, but we cut back so we wouldn't be well over five percent to put money. Maybe we need to look at a special warrant article going forward for OPEB only. I mean, if you say to the towns, here's the budget, and we need a hundred thousand dollars, you know, for OPEB, Sutton, your contribution would be nine thousand. I'm not sure that's a good strategy, but we, we'll, like health insurance or any else, we'll look at alternatives, and like, I don't want to be too sour about this, but the citizens voted in, you know, overwhelming support for that. So, I'm glad we chased, able to do that, so.
I was gonna say, I mean, notwithstanding whether, you know, uncertainty a little right now, but whether we have nine, ten, eleven, and how many years have gone with twelve and out, we approach every town as if they're the only one. We value every relationship, every town. We will attend all three of these, fully prepared to answer any and all questions and continue forward with the meeting.
Yeah, I don't have to manufacture any argument that is inconsistent with the respect in which you hold, one hundred and twenty-six Finance Committee members, sixty select persons, five state reps, the two senators, any other, any citizen. We value these relationships, we spend countless hours developing the budget, and, you know, that's the way we do our business. Therefore, I get a little, you know, get a little bristly, I guess, and some may suggest that we don't do business that way, because I know we do, and I know how fashioned we are by far.
And I know some people worry about the, whether or not we're still on our mission. I just look back at skills. Skills is above the trade, skills above career technical education. Skills is about our mission. It's the whole purpose of why schools like this were developed and designed, and looking at the success we have at those, those competitions, not just district, not just state, but even nationals, and we've had students go on to Worlds. So, but I think that's, you know, that's a very important part of the message, is that we are on mission, and you can see it from the results at skills, that we are showing these kids how to do the trade and how to do it very well, make them much better employees and, you know, much more, much better in the workforce.
Validating.
Okay? Anything else on the budget?
That's it. Right. Next item on the agenda, Dr. Fitzpatrick.
According to our examination of the previous meeting, school meeting, we held a public hearing on school choice, had a significant discussion about school choice, but did, but cast a formal vote about school choice, which we must do. So, there is a motion that's being encouraged that supports the conversation that we had last night.
Hi, Anthony, it's hereby moved that the Blackstone Valley location, vocational regional school district committee agree to not participate in school choice during the 2018-2019 school year.
Dr. Seck.
Motion made, and second, questions, comments, discussion, seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries that we will not participate in school choice in the upcoming school.
Thank you, chairman of the committee, item thirteen point two. I believe we have alerted all school committee members that we're in the next cycle for nominations, re-elections, and the state information pretty much suggests fifty signatures.
That's correct.
And just, you can, you can acquire signatures in any of the member communities, although they have to be on different sheets so they can be certified by the town clerk of that town. So, frankly, you can get fifty signatures from a town other than the one you live in, okay? But, you know, for those who dump a home, I guess, but they're so. In any case, we're now in that cycle, right, of, you know, submitting. We will, we will provide a courtesy alert to the town clerks that the election season for us is not about. We hope you'll continue to serve, you've been a particularly effective board, and, you know, but we want to make sure, and I believe everybody has their thing, anyone who goes off. I, I serve as the clerk for that process, district clerk, so I don't think we've had any issues. Years ago, we had the town clerk from Bellingham, Kathy Harvey, who's the spouse of the former chair of the school committee, come up and swear everyone in. But we have subsequently discovered that some of the local town clerks prefer to swear in their person, so like a home rule kind of thing. So, probably best that, once the election process goes through, that you stop into your local town clerk and you serve all. We'll win our elections first.
Yeah, we have to win first.
Anybody who might wonder, your incumbency drives, you know, first name on the ballot under your community, but you run the ballot in all thirteen towns. So, any questions? If you've got a question, one way or the other, something.
And being the first town on the list, I tend to get the most votes.
Forty-something thousand of the questions. Ah, you said he's pretty close.
He had one eye closed, his head tilted sideways.
I almost lost the blank the first time. Blank got a lot of votes.
Any other questions on that? Item thirteen point three, we have a document that confirms that the state has once again provided this favorable, full approval status of the nursing program. Any questions on that? See none, move on. Consistent with accountability process and our professional understanding, I thought it appropriate, it's been near, I would suppose, of the next cycle, that you receive a progress report on the performance goals identified for me and some evidence of attainment relative to those goals. I believe that refers to eight goals, and not all has been completed because the whole, you know, you've got a couple months left. But I hope that serves as tangible evidence of productivity. Any questions on that? See none, move on. We have an official written notification of resignation of our long-term English future graduate school, and a published poet, one other thing, has fulfilled a long-term ambition to work in a religious setting and will be leaving at the end of the school year, I believe, and making that transition. And Mr. Curtis, who was the son of the former chief of police, will move on. He is a very dedicated individual. He made a special point of making certain that Anthony and myself were supportive of this, and understood his reasons for doing something which he said he's always wanted to do. We have a verbal resignation from our seventeen-year academic coordinator, but we do not have a written one, because obviously negotiations have not been finalized. She's been exploring an opportunity to join a sister VOTEC system, and it comes as no surprise to us that other VOTEC systems would like to recruit our people. But we will keep you posted on it as that becomes more official, kind of like Dustin Troy, I guess, has yet returned to the lineup. Any, any questions? Steven, Jim, Bailey?
Bill, either.
Thank you.
We said that was very
Yeah.
It's that time of year. All right. Next item, new business. Does any school committee member have any new business to forward?
Yes, I had Upton resident just recently asking a couple of questions, one of which the documents. The other one was, by the way, it's Upton resident, is a seventy-eight grad of BBT. He's recently retired, and he's inquired as to why we don't have night school anymore, or if it's in the future. And his concern or thoughts is, there are a lot of people out there, obviously, that could, you know, that aren't school age, that could use a little education, use a little vocational education. Has there been any thoughts in respect to night school?
In twenty-five years, actually, we made, I inherited a night school program that was, for the record, okay? And so, we tried three different efforts to reestablish it, but the, the condition in which the program, it was, I think it was like back in the day, fifteen, twenty dollars to begin, actually, John LeBrun was particularly concerned about what was happening in night school, so I was very clear and strict and other. school, as far as wear and tear and stuff, and other kinds of things, not advantageous to the district. And so we frankly were losing money, but during, before, yes, the erosion that took place, that drove the program into the status of ours, you know, when I arrived, was good news for Asset Vet and Beta. So they decided to expand their evening programs substantially, and they marketed, they even hired someone to, you know, flood the newspapers and other marketing things. And so they picked up business that people might have thought of coming here, and so that may have contributed even further to the, you know, the lack of income, to cover the cost. And so before we lost, actually lost money, we, they, I'm gonna, you know, said it was like fifteen thousand, and there was like eleven thousand in the kitty, then there was eight thousand, anyway, it was, you know, deteriorated. Before we got into the real red, taking money from the daytime program, then we stopped, okay? So I know that evening programs are considered to be evening trade preparatory, which could be like the licensed trade preparations, electrical and some of the others, and some of the people who were teaching those courses wanted more and more benefits, which impacted the, given the finances of that. And the other, more common evening program are evening practical arts, okay, which is, you know, the potteries and, you know, change oil in the car or something, all right? And the, and people liked to do that, I mean, not to say there was appeal, but the other opportunity, those opportunities have existed at the other sister schools, they're not too far away, Marlboro and John, and that, and so they kind of took over the business part of it, so.
My experience going back when I came here for carpentry, night school, it wasn't so much to learn or get a carpentry education, it was to use the equipment. So I didn't see it, or don't see it as a benefit in that sense. You're not gonna learn a trade coming here at night.
Right, and I would call it evening practical arts, okay? In other words, you learn how, you know, maybe make a sawhouse and then use it, I mean, you know, it's kind of basic, what you might, the old versions of industrial arts, handy tools and how to use them, you know, it wasn't intended to, that's the evening trade preparatory, that's very different, okay, than the evening practical arts. But sorry.
I remember at least once or twice over the years, us talking about that in committee meetings, and one of the challenges, especially in today's environment, was with all the teams, clubs, and student activities going many nights well past six o'clock, we struggled with trying to think about how would we separate adult learners from the kids who are here using the school very late at night? And that sort of drove us down the path when we discussed it in committee meetings, that we didn't want to, we didn't have a solution to partition off adult learning sections of the school, since we do have so much of the student population here late into the evening.
You just beat me to the punch, I'm saying that, yeah, that is additional rationale that I support fully, that they contributed to decision, okay? And our kids don't need any of that. There are some exceptions now, though. I mean, we added the nursing program, which is structured, it's not evening, it's kind of afternoon, but it's got a window that allows us to not disrupt, and you can see all the, all the extra effort that our staff give to these kids, there's nobody at home anymore, and the clubs are involved. The other thing is, we just recently received a manufacturing grant, so we are selective in offering kind of attendance programs that will be available to the citizens of the area who have that interest, but there's grant money that comes, that subsidizes it, so we don't take the risk of losing money, so.
And what I was saying, it's kind of interesting, is that like with the growing student body and with the increased club activity and the fact that it was here, it's already placing additional strain on facilities to get, to get the campus ready for the next day, and then in the shortened summer and things like that, because they're trying to do what they can with everybody going around them, and then add another program that takes up a wing or something, they've got to completely alter their structure.
Well, also keep in mind, we have twice the students we had one of our users with.
Yes, Anthony, okay.
Just as a point of interest, though, as you bring up the security concern, I do Cory check all of the LPN students, okay, so they have all been cleared by me prior to starting the program, and that is also what we intend to do as we pursue this manufacturing evening program.
Which you would have to do, especially if the kids are gonna be here in the morning.
Well, to Anthony's point, to Yitz's point, you really can't separate them, and so the best alternative is to Cory check them.
So having said that, if you're aware of a given interest, okay, sometimes people like tax planning, you know, beauty products, I don't know, that sometimes there's this particular interest that we could always examine in a controlled environment, you know, a niche, okay, and look at whether or not we could do something, but not reinstate probably the full-fledged program that people had years ago.
I was gonna say, this wasn't a to go down a path, absolutely not, this is just a, we have to, there's a lot, a lot of work involved in how we impact everybody.
I remember back in the day when they had night schools, sometimes it was, you know, the night school would do, it was a different teacher and a different instructor, and the teachers come in the next day, and students are ready to run equipment, and the equipment's broken, but nobody said a word. And it's just one of those things where it's hard to control, you know, things do happen, but, you know, but then you've got your training things for the students, now what do they do? They can't learn if something's broken, so maybe learn how to fix it, but that's about all you can do. So those are the things we have to weigh, too.
Not to have a hundred reasons not to do it, but what John is getting into is the fact that if your daytime people stay, you kind of bring them out, okay, because now they're working fourteen, sixteen hours, or they don't go home, they stick around. If you have an outside people in, then you have to have the inside people give up their keys, give access to the cabinet, if the chuck is seized in the morning and you don't know it, and you show up, you're something, there were certain, you know, accidents that would happen at night, but the daytime teacher wouldn't know it until they arrived the next day, okay? So you could, you know.
So they were just a variety of issues, you know, and what happens if your daytime people do the double shift, then they have a tendency to call the sick one off, because they're more likely to be sick than worn, so. These are just challenges of running multiple programs.
Watch your investment.
Any other new business to bring forward? Doc, do you have anything?
No, I, probably an item for the good of the committee, so I'll hold it for the next category.
Picking up the next category, I don't see any other new business coming forward. Items for the good of the committee. As always, the printed materials are available, if you would like a copy. Terry's got his resource handy. Doc, did you, you have?
Yeah, we just, we're receiving regular notifications of opportunities to, you know, promote some of the competence of our students, the, you know, and, well, just had a student receive the full ROTC scholarship, and grandfather hugged me the other day, I'm sure he's appreciative of everybody, Blackstone student, fine young man. The, we just received, among others, a request to have one of the Boston media do a special on a student who's graduating who's had perfect attendance in every grade at every level since he started school.
Wow.
So, and he is among three with perfect attendance in our graduating class, but this young man has never missed a day anywhere, okay? And so, yeah, pity the guy who threw twelve quick, it's really, yeah.
They're a little bit monetary.
They wanted to, they wanted to do a special on him, I said, do you have any?
They're coming Monday at noon, that way the young man can participate in Senior Day in the morning, and then they're gonna come.
I hope he doesn't get sent early.
I agree.
It's interesting, because I got the call from the reporter to validate his attendance record and so forth, I think it's really great that they're recognizing him for this, and attendance is something that is very highly valued by us as a technical school, because employers value us so much. But just as a point of interest, and not to take anything away from the young man, in my time here, he is the third to have K through twelve perfect attendance.
Really?
Yeah. I, when, the first one, I never thought I'd see another one, and I said that when we got the second one, I said, you know, I guess lightning does strike twice, I never thought I'd see a second one of these. And so now he is actually the third Valley Tech student in my twenty-one years to do this. So I'm not sure if that enhances the story or lessens it, but I thought it was a pretty cool thing.
Have him meet the kids who do not have perfect, if you're here. Now, obviously, our attendance is a speak for itself, we look at the data.
Well, I was gonna say, have it happen here three times, you know, obviously shows the commitment at the K through eight levels, makes me wonder how many times does it happen across town and all?
No, that's only three during Anthony's time.
That's three in twenty-one years.
All right. Any other items for the good of the committee? All right. Seeing none, our next regularly scheduled meeting is June twenty-first, and I see that we have completed the agenda as presented and brought forward, I will entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion made, and seconded by Mr. Bartlett to adjourn this meeting. All those, questions, comments, discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We are adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.